Achad shalti meit adonai, o tavakesh. Achad shalti meit adonai, o tavakesh. Shivti be'veta donai kol yamechay. Lachazot benoam, benoam, Adonai, olivake be'halom. Lachazot benoam, benoam, Adonai, olivake be'halom. Achad shalti meit adonai, o tavakesh. Achad shalti meit adonai, o tavakesh.
Shabbat shalom everyone, welcome to our Friday night Shabbat service at Congregation Benet Israel, brought to you on our YouTube channel virtually as we have been for several months now. Along with me is cantor Sarah Freudenberger and our accompanimentist, her husband Peter Freudenberger, and her choir, her daughter's Arya, and I call her Calliope, but her name is Ada, but she's my Calliope. I'm sending hugs, Calliope. All right. And Calliope's sending you all hugs as well. This is a special Friday night. This is the last Friday night in the month of Elul, the month prior to the High Holy Days, Rosh Hashanah. And this entire month, we've been asking members of various auxiliaries and constituencies in our congregation to participate in our service over the past several weeks. Our preschool parents and our religious school parents have joined us. Our brotherhood and sisterhood has joined us. And on this last Friday night of Elul, prior to the High Holy Days, we have members of our Board of Trustees and specifically members of our Executive Board who are with us this evening to share in worship. So we welcome all of them and they will participate with us throughout the service. Cantor Sarah began with a beautiful song that comes from Psalm 27, which is traditionally offered during the High Holy Day season. Achad shalti, one thing I ask of God, only this do I seek, to dwell in the house of God all the days of my life, to gaze upon the beauty of Adonai and to frequent God's temple. It's our prayer and our wish that soon we will all be able to frequent God's temple, our congregation Benet Israel. We pray sooner rather than later. But until then, our homes are also a mikdashma'at, a small sanctuary, in which we can offer up our prayers, which we will do virtually for our High Holy Days. And we'll talk more about that at the end of the service when we make some announcements. But this evening, we are going to begin, as is customary on Shabbat, to bring Shabbat in with the lighting of candles. And our Vice President of Education, Robyn Rubenoff, will offer us a candle lighting reading and then candles will be lit for us by our Vice President of Development, Andrea Cannon. So you can listen and follow along if you have a prayer book. This is on page three. Robyn?
As these Shabbat candles give light to all who behold them, so may we, by our lives, give light to all who behold us. As their brightness reminds us of the generations of Israel who have kindled light, so may we, in our own day, be among those who kindle light.
And now Andrea Cannon will light our Shabbat candles for us. Andrea, she's sitting there alongside her husband, the President of our congregation, Jeff Cannon.
We are trying to light the match.
I don't know what matchbook to use.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. We're used to technical difficulties.
Baruch ata Adonai Eloheinu Melech ha'olam. Asher kiddushanu ve'mitzvotav. Tivenu lehadli neyashel Shabbat. Blessed are you, Adonai our God, Sovereign of the Universe, who hallows us with mitzvot, commanding us to kindle the lights of Shabbat.
Now, our President Jeff Cannon will introduce the kiddush prayer with the English reading of the paragraph from Brachheet from Genesis prior to the chanting of kiddush. So again, if you're in the prayer book, you can follow along on page five. Jeff?
Thank you very much. The heaven and the earth were finished in all of their array. On the seventh day, God finished the work that God had been doing. And God ceased on the seventh day from all the work that God had done. And God blessed the seventh day and declared it holy. Because on it, God ceased from all the work of creation that God had done.
Baruch atadonai Eloheinu Melech ha'olam. Borei perei ha'gafen. Baruch atadonai Eloheinu Melech ha'olam. Asher kiddushanu ve'mitzvotav ve'ratzav ha'nu. Ve'Shabat kodsho be'hava uvratzot hinchilnu. Zikaron ha'masei ve'reishi. Ki hu yom techila le'mikrae kodesh. Ze'ach le'tziyat mitzrayim. Yivnu vacharta. Yotanu kidashta mikol ha'min. Ve'Shabat kodsho be'hava uvratzot hinchalta nu. Baruch atadonai me'kodesh ha'Shabat. And now, cantor Sarah is going to begin our Kabbalat Shabbat service, the service of welcoming Shabbat by singing Shiruv la'donai, Shir Ha'Dash. If you're in the prayer books on page 13, you can follow along.
Shiruv la'donai kol ha'aretz. Shiruv la'donai, shir ha'Dash. Shiruv la'donai kol ha'aretz. Shiruv la'donai, shir ha'Dash. Sing unto God, all the earth, a new song. I will sing unto God, a new song. Sing unto God, and we'll all sing along. All the earth, a new song unto God. Shiruv la'donai kol ha'aretz.
Indeed, we love to sing songs unto God. And one of those songs is, we pray a cure soon and speedily in our days for this pandemic. But on Shabbat, it's customary also to welcome Shabbat in with the singing of the beautiful tune, Shalom Aleichem. If you're in the prayer books, you can follow along on page 24. And cantor Sarah will continue with Shalom Aleichem.
Shalom aleichem, maleche ha'Sharayt. Mi'melech, maleche ha'melachim. Bo'achem le'shalom. Maleche ha'shalom. Mi'melech, maleche ha'melachim. Baruchu ni le'shalom. Maleche ha'shalom. Mi'melech, maleche ha'melachim. Seid chem le'shalom. Maleche ha'shalom. Mi'melech, maleche ha'melachim.
The sun sets. We enter dusk. And with the evening comes our evening prayer. And we make the transition as cantor Sarah continues with the chanting of the Chatzikach.
Yitzkadal ve'yitzkada shme raba. Be'alma divra chirotei ve'yamlich malchutei. B'cha yehon uvyo mechon uvcha yedekhuv bet Israel. Bagala, bagala uvizman kariv veimeru amen. Ye'hemey raba mevorach le'olam olam me'ama'ya. Yitzbarach, yitzbarach ve'yishtabach. Ve'yitzpa'ar ve'yitro'ma ve'yitnasei. Ve'yitadar ve'yitalei ve'yitalal. Shmeit kodesha barichu. Leila min kol b'archata ve'shirata. Tush be'chatav nechamata. Tami ran be'alma veimeru amen.
A formal call to our evening prayer is ushered in with the Baruch Hu. Traditionally, it's customary to stand or if you're in your homes and watching, you just want to lift up your hearts, I think God will know that as well as we continue with Baruch Hu. The evening service is made up of our call to prayer. And there are two blessings that are recited prior to the recitation of the monotheistic creed of our faith, the Shema. The first blessing will be read for us by Vicky Wiener, our Vice President of Strategic Planning, which is the blessing acknowledging the difference between night and day. Vicky?
Blessed are you, Adonai our God, ruler of the universe, who speaks the evening into being, skillfully opens the gates, thoughtfully alters the time and changes the seasons, and arranges the stars in their heavenly courses according to plan. You are Creator of day and night, rolling light away from darkness and darkness from light, transforming day into night and distinguishing one from the other. Adonai, tzva'ot is your name. Ever living God, may you reign continually over us into eternity. Blessed are you, Adonai, who brings on evening.
And the second blessing, which speaks of love, avatol love, everlasting love, will be read for us by our Vice President of Membership, Susan May. Susan?
Everlasting love you offered your people Israel by teaching us Torah and mitzvot, laws and precepts. Therefore, Adonai our God, when we lie down and when we rise up, we will meditate on your laws and your commandments. We will rejoice in your Torah forever. Day and night, we will reflect on them, for they are our life and doing them lengthens our days. Never remove your love from us. Praise to you, Adonai, who loves your people Israel. Baruch ata Adonai, ohaveh amoh yisrael.
And as is your custom, whether to sit or rise, we join together in confirming our belief in the one and only God.
Shema Israel, Adonai Eloheinu. Adonai echad. Baruch shem kevot malchuto le'olam ba'ed.
And cantor Sarah will continue with the chanting of the Ve'Ha'vta prayer. And I invite all of you in your homes to join along as well.
All right, come on Arya. This is Arya's favorite.
Arya's gonna help.
She's gonna do it with me.
All right.
Arya stole my prayer book though. Ready? Come closer.
Ve'achet adonai Elohecha. Ve'chol levavcha uvchol navshacha. Uvchol me'odacha. Ve'ha'yu hadvarim ha'ela. Asher anochi me'tzavcha. Hayoma levavcha. Ve'shinatam levanecha. Ve'dibartam bam. Ve'shivtacha be'vetacha. Uv'lechtacha baderech. Uv'shoch be'ha. Uv'kumecha. Uv'shartam le'ot al yedacha. Ve'ha'yu etotavod bene'necha. Uv'vavtam al mezuzot be'tcha. Uv'isharecha. Le'manchiskeru va'sitam et komitzvotai. Ve'hem kiddushim le'hem. Adonai Elohem. Asher utseit dihem meret seitzrayim. Le'ot lahem le'hem. Adonai Elohem.
Thank you Arya, cantor Sarah. Every evening, we invoke the prayer of redemption, Mihamocha. We exhort to God how grateful we are for God's redemption. We understand that just as our ancestors went out of Egypt, which was their narrow place, the middle of the word mitzrayim in Hebrew, the word tsar means narrow. And I'm sure we all know the Yiddish word surus. We have trouble. Well, our ancestors had trouble. It was slavery. And they were stuck in these narrow places. And our rabbis understand, all of us have these narrow places in which we find ourselves. We understand that all too well in this pandemic. We are stuck. We are imprisoned, mostly in our homes and away from people we love, away from our community and our congregations. And we lift our voices nonetheless, asking God to redeem us, as we redeemed our ancestors. That God listen to the prayers of our heart, answer us and redeem us from our difficulty and from the straits we find ourselves in. And I can only think now of the song by Rabbi Nachman of Brodslum, "All the world is but a narrow bridge." And tsar ma'od, a very narrow bridge. But the most important thing is not to be fearful. It's not to be afraid. Our ancestors had great trepidation. I'm sure anxiety and fears, they left Egypt not knowing what the future would hold. We too find ourselves in a similar position in our world. We are anxious. We are fearful. We are not sure of what tomorrow will bring. But nonetheless, we have faith that tomorrow will bring a better world for us. We'll find a cure and all of us will be redeemed from this terrible oppression we suffer. So cantor Sarah will lift up her voice in singing Mihamocha and I invite you to join with at home as well.
Mihamocha be'eli Adonai. Mihamocha nadar bakodesh norate hilot. Mihamocha be'eli Adonai. Mihamocha nadar bakodesh norate hilot. Who is like you? 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 Malchutcha ra'uvanecha bo'kei ayam. Lipne moshe u'miriam ze'eli anu. Anu ve'ameru. Adonai mloch le'olam ba'ed. Who is like you? Who is like you? Who is like you? Who is like you?
Baruch atadonai, the all Israel. We praise you eternal God, one who redeems the people of Israel. We reach the evening prayer. Truly, one of my favorite prayers from the time my children were quite small. This is something we used to say every single night, that as they went to sleep and we covered them and gave them their favorite stuffed animal or blanket, we also implored God to protect them as well with this beautiful tabernacle of peace, the Sukkot Shalom. And I pray that all of us, in the difficulties we face at this time, that we might also be sheltered and embraced by God's Sukkot, Tabernacle of Peace. Cantor Sarah continues with Hashki Mayn.
Hashki renu Adonai. Be'eloheinu le'shalom. Be'hami de'nu shom renu le'ha.
This is the Sabbath Eve, and from the time our ancestors came out of Egypt and into the wilderness, in the Book of Exodus, we are constantly reminded that we must keep the mitzvah, the commandment of Shabbat. So here on this Friday night, I welcome our Vice President of Communications, Stanley Silver, who will read for us the commandment of Shabbat. Stanley? Stanley, you've got to unmute yourself, Stanley. Push that unmute button, Stan.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry. The people of Israel shall keep Shabbat, observing Shabbat throughout the ages as a covenant for all time. It is a sign for all time between me and the people of Israel. For in six days Adonai made heaven and earth, and on the seventh day, God ceased from work and was refreshed.
Thank you, Stan. Good job.
Thank you.
All right. So what we'll do is we'll do this more often on Friday nights. We'll have you onboard, all the members of the exec and board and Stan. And the more you get to do this, the easier it becomes. Even I've learned how to be able to transfer our Zoom up to our YouTube channel. So we're all learning with this new technology, how to stay connected with all of you out there enjoying, I hope, our services. We reached the central part of the service now, the Amidah, the standing prayer. Again, I invite you, if you wish to rise, I'll place the prayer up on the screen in case you don't have a prayer book, or you can lift your hearts and souls up as we join together in praising God. Cantor?
Adonai sefatay tiftach ufiyagita hilatecha. Adonai, open up my lips, that my mouth may declare your praise. Baruch atah Adonai, Eloheinu ve'eloheh avoteinu ve'imoteinu. Eloheh Abraham, Eloheh Yitzhak, ve'eloheh Yakov. Eloheh Sarah, Eloheh Rivka, Eloheh Rachel, ve'eloheh Leiah. Ha'el ha'gadol ha'gibor ve'hanora. El-elyon gomel ha'sadim tovim ve'konei ha'kol ve'zoher ha'seavot ve'imahot. Umei vigeul ha'lipne v'nayhem le'maan shemo be'ahava. Maleh hozar u'moshia u'magin. Baruch atah Adonai, magin Abraham ve'zerat Sarah. Atah gibor leolam Adonai, mechayeh ha'kol atarav lehoshia. Morid hatal, mechalkel chaim be'chesed. Mechayeh ha'kol be'rachamim rabim. Soma'ch no'fliim ve'ropeh hoolim. U'mati erasurim. U'mekayem emunato le'shainay apar. Mihamocha ba'al givurot u'midom elach. Malech mimit u'mechayeh u'matsmiach yeshua. Ve'neman atah le'ha'yeot ha'kol. Baruch atah Adonai, mechayeh ha'kol. Atah kadosh ve'shimcha kadosh. U'kedoshim behol yom ya'halelu chassela. Baruch atah Adonai, ha'el ha'kadosh.
Let us praise Adonai, source of knowledge and light, from whom we draw wisdom and insight. Let us savor the fullness of each and every day and fill our souls with the treasures of Shabbat. And let us appreciate these distinctions: sacred from profane, charity from greed, purpose from drift. Let us affirm our covenant as God's people. Let us honor those who study Torah. Let us uphold the truth of ongoing revelation. Let us celebrate the glory of our tradition and draw refreshment from the well springs of prayer. Let us respect tradition and encourage creative faith. And let us dress ourselves in the garments of God, compassion for the needy, embrace of the stranger, and then spread the canopy of peace over all the world. Let's take a moment that each of us might offer our own individual prayers as we continue these next few moments in silence. In Shabbat in the Torah, we read a double portion from the Book of Deuteronomy, the portions of Nitzavim and Va'elav. In Nitzavim, the entire community of Israel gathers together. The Torah tells us tribal heads, elders, officials, the men, their wives and children, the stranger with them, the woodcutter and water drawer. In other words, everyone, regardless of age, gender, or occupation, come to stand before God. And that's the literal meaning of Nitzavim, to stand. Rabbi Bonnie Koppell highlights the great irony and juxtaposition created by the two names of these portions. The second portion, Va'elav, literally means go forth. In essence, this week's double Torah portion gives us a conflicting message, to stand and at the same time, go forth. How should we understand this? Well, I think the easiest way to comprehend this is to acknowledge the date today. It's 9/11. This is the 19th anniversary of the day when we all stood in utter shock and horror when terrorists piloted two airplanes into the World Trade Centers, one plane into the Pentagon, and a fourth, United Number 93, went down in Pennsylvania as passengers tried to regain control of the plane from the terrorists. When this unspeakable event occurred, we couldn't move. We all stood, dumbstruck and frozen in that moment. It was incomprehensible. Yet we had no way to stop that moment and the moments that followed. Time went forth, and we had to move forward as individuals, as a community, and as a country with resolve. We went forth, reminded of, armed with, the terrible knowledge, as Franz Kafka put it so haughtily, that the meaning of life is that it ends. So knowing this reality, understanding that we and people we love will ultimately die, how do we go forth to living? In his book, Lessons for Living, Rabbi Sidney Greenberg cites a study by psychologist William Marston, who asked 300 people this brief question. What do you have to live for? He found that 94% of his respondents were simply enduring the present while they waited for the future. They were waiting for something to happen, waiting for the right man or the right woman, waiting for children to grow up, waiting to pay off the mortgage, waiting for a vacation, waiting for retirement, waiting to get involved in the community, waiting to learn some new skill or hobby. Do you get it? That means that 94% of us are waiting while each new day passes us by. Friends, 100% of us are running out of time. Rosh Hashanah is one week away. What are we waiting for? The High Holy Days are ultimately about our confrontation with our own mortality. Consider these words of the Moxor, the High Holy Day prayer book, "Who shall live and who shall die? Who will reach the ripeness of age and who will be taken before their time? Who by fire and who by water? Who by earthquake and who by plague?" These words have never been more meaningful. Our days are indeed like a passing shadow. There's a story told of a Talmud professor who asked the student hurrying by, "Where are you running to?" "I'm rushing home to look over the High Holy Day prayer book, the Moxor, before I have to lead services in my congregation," replied the student, catching his breath. The professor added, "The prayer book hasn't changed since last year, but perhaps you have. Go home and look yourself over." Friends, this is our task. The meaning of life is that it ends. We have one more week to consider what is the meaning of our lives. If our lives ended tomorrow, what would we regret most? What changes would we wish we had made? What are we waiting for? Even within the confines of this pandemic, we have the opportunity to change, to grow, to make a difference with our lives. I wish you all Shana Tovah, and you all be blessed with the strength, wisdom, and courage to indeed make it a good and sweet New Year. I hope all of you will join in our live stream and Zoom services beginning next Friday evening for Rosh Hashanah. Till then, I wish you Shabbat Shalom. One of the many things we do to help share the message to the living who are in pain and who are in need of healing is to let them know we are praying for them. I pray with all my heart and soul that God might continue to inspire humanity, might continue to confer wisdom upon humanity, that we might be able to deal with this plague and all other situations that confound us, that hurt us, that create sickness and illness. I pray that as we offer these prayers, we come to the realization of what acts and behaviors and actions that we can do, that we can perform, and might make a difference in the lives of people who are in need of physical or spiritual healing. At this time, we remember those in need of healing. Deborah Benson, Alvin Yarkin, Charlotte Cammer, Richard Levine, Nicole McKevitt, Michelle Kingen, Karen Silver, Sheila Butler, Carol Porwitch, Elliot Porwitch, Fabalea Bodesther, Rachel Glatt, Josh Bernstein, Margot Engel, David Schwartz, Casey Rose Mayer, Marcia Schiller Silverstein, Alvara Chavez, Gary Vandel, Victoria Athes, Hannah Rachel Bat Taborah, Baruch Ben Pneina, Shelby Caven, Delma Fisher, Elliot Kleinberg, Anna Zegal, Naomi Kirsty, Lori Chazen-Hurwitz, Ben Evans, Tammy Shostak Lipsky, Claire Weiss, Linda Frelick, Ashi Glatt, Richard Stransky, Shakar Karen, Alex Sanchez, Deborah Israel, Morna Chayehuda Ben Ita, Sveet Hershel Shai Ben Gitel, Danielle Seltzer, Harvey Merenstein, Kathy Kaufman, Marlene Pollak, Gerald Goldberg, Norma Frill, Julie Miller, Ronna Young, Ken Tankus, Art Wiseman, Jacob Butsy, Irene Alpert, Sharon Schutzman, Tripp Ravenfeld, Elizabeth Solomon, Gloria Bernstein, Barbara Winkler, Jordan Stein, Tripp Ravenfeld, Roda Friedman, Jason Paul, Nancy Carroll, Dennis Penzel, Sharon Wank, and Jerry Butler. At this time, Cantor Sarah offers our prayer of healing for all those whom we have named and for all those whom we now name in our hearts.
Mi she'be'racha avotenu. Me'kor ha'bracha le'imotenu. May the source of strength who bless the ones before us. Help us find the courage to make our lives a blessing. And let us say amen. Mi she'be'racha imotenu. Bless those in need of healing with refuah shalima. The renewal of body. The renewal of spirit. And let us say amen.
Thank you Cantor Sarah. And we now. If you've got the prayer book, we can continue on page 282. And I'll put it up on the screen as we join together in a minute.
Aleinu le'shabach ladon ha'kol. Latit gedul al yotsir brishit. Shalau asanu ke'goyeh ha'razot. Ve'loosamanu ke'mishpachot adama. Shalau samchel kinu ka'hem. Ve'gora linu ke'choh hamonam. Ve'anachnu kaurim. U'mishchachavim u'mo'dim. Lipnei melach malche hamlachim. Ha'kadosh baruchu. Le'melach ha'kol ha'raz. Byom ha'u. Byom ha'u. Yadonai echad. U'shemo. U'shemo. U'shemo echad.
We continue now. Remembering all who gave us life and love. All who died al-kedusha shem for the sanctification of God's name. On this anniversary of 9/11. We also remember all those whose lives were lost in that horrific day. We pray that their memories might continue to bless their family and loved ones. And that their blessings might be an inspiration for us all. At this time, we remember Ilsekamas. For the period of Shiva. And those within Shloshim of Judith Garber, Barbara Kaplan and Martin Dubby. Your sites at this season for Sylvia Berlin, Sidney Berlin, Irving Cohen, Iris Danif. Paul Diamond, Helen Fox Fromm, Daniel Fuchs, Carol Ann Getten. Herb Graber, Kenneth Greenberg. Lilian Herman, Betty Kaplan. Fay Klein, Bob Kottius. Richard Lee. Hank Lotman. John Margolis, Maureen Michelson. Deborah Nemhauser, Jerry Pollak, Lisa Pollak. Adam Ross, Ellen Salas, Benjamin Samick. Jack Silver, Geraldine Spilkowitz, Herbert Tesler and Myrna Yaschulka. For those who mourn and those who wish, we join together in the Kaddish prayer. Itgadal ve'itgadash ve'rabah. Yalma divrach yuruteh ve'yamlich malchuteh. Mechayeh chon ve'yomeh chon mechayeh de'chol be't Israel. Bagala vismankari ve'imruh amen. Ya'he'shnei rabam ve'urach le'olam olomel mayah. Itbarach ve'ishtabach itbar mi'tromah ve'aseh. Itadar ve'italav italal shmed kutsa prichu. La'ila min kol birchata ve'shirata. Tush be'chata ve'nekemata. Ta'miran ve'alma ve'imruh amen. Ya'he'shla ma'rabah bin shemaiah. Mechaim aleinu ve'alko Israel ve'imruh amen. Mi she'be'racha avotenu. U'ya'aseh shalom. Aleinu ve'alko Israel ve'imruh amen. May the source of peace on high send peace and comfort to all who mourn and all who are bereaved, and we say amen. So as I mentioned at the outset of the service. This is the last Friday Shabbat in the month of Elul. Next Friday night begins, is the first day of Tishrei. The first day of the new month of Tishrei. When we gather together to celebrate our High Holy Days. And on behalf of all the Board of Trustees. Who are represented here this evening by our executive board, by members of our executive board. I thank you all for joining us on our YouTube. And we pray that just as all of us will be on the live stream next Friday night and Saturday, the first two days of Rosh Hashanah. That you will also join us. Just a reminder that this week at CBI, at Congregation Benay Israel, our congregation. We have a special, on Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, we have special hours for our members to drive through. And pick up a special bag, a holiday gift bag from us at CBI to you. To thank you for your continued participation, your continued membership and affiliation with this holy community. You are a blessing to us all. It is through your kindness and your continued contributions, donations and membership. That we continue to be a thriving Reform congregation here in Boca Raton, Florida. Able to do things via Zoom and on live stream. And to show our appreciation, we hope Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. You'll drive through, pick up your gift bag. In that gift bag will also be our Moxor, special High Holy Day prayer book. Created by the clergy at Congregation Benay Israel for you to use and follow along with our live stream services. So do drive in Monday and Tuesday, it's between the hours of 10 and 12. And on Wednesday, it's between the hours of 4 and 6 p.m. You can find a link on our webpage, just to register to say I'm coming and let us know. That would be much appreciated. So on behalf of the board, I thank you for joining us. Special thanks to Cantor Sarah and her whole crew behind her. Her daughter Arya and Kaliapi Ada. And her husband Peter. And to all of you who joined us via Zoom this evening to celebrate the Shabbat. I pray that indeed you will have a good Shabbat today and tomorrow. And by the way, Cantor Sarah and I will be back on Zoom tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. With our Torah learning service and a Torah study on the Torah portions of Nitzavim and Va'elah. So I hope you'll join us tomorrow morning at 9:00. And I'm going to let our president Jeff Cannon unmute and share a few words on this Friday night prior to the High Holy Days. Jeff?
Thank you. First of all, I want to wish everybody Happy New Year, very safe and happy Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur. And unfortunately, this year, I'm not going to be able to see all of you in person, but we certainly are thinking of you. As you come to CBI to pick up your special gift bags, remember that it's our food collection as well for the needy in this, in our direct community. Who aren't able to feed themselves and sustain themselves. And every year we do food collection on Yom Kippur. Obviously, because we're not being in person this year, we're going to be doing it a little differently. So please bring your food and drop it off when you bring up your baskets. And think of the people in the community who are not as fortunate as we are. And hopefully, we can do as well on a remote basis as we do in person. But our thoughts are with everyone. We wish everyone a happy and safe holidays. And looking forward to the days that we can all get together again.
Thanks Jeff. And just a reminder, you can find our entire schedule of High Holy Day services for Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur. And that includes not only our live stream services, but a special junior congregation for our elementary age school children. A special preschool, age appropriate High Holy Day services on Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur as well. You can find this whole schedule of services on our website. CBI Boca.org, www.cbi boc a.org. Do check it out and get a hold of the schedule and join us next week and for the entire Yom Kippur. Days of all next week. We're going to conclude with another song appropriate for this holiday season. Cantor Sarah is going to finish with Hashivei.
Hashivei nu, hashivei nu. Adonai he'lecha. Ha'desh, ha'desh. Return again, return again. Return to the land of your soul. Return again, return again. Return to the land of your soul. Return to who you are, return to where you are. Return to where you are born and reborn again. Return again, return again. Return to the land of your soul.
Eloheinu ve'elohe avotenu, our God and God of our ancestors. Help us, O God, to return to you. Help us to return to ourselves. Let us be better in this new year. In spite of our circumstances, in spite of this pandemic. Help us be, O God, the people you have commanded us to be. A people that care for one another. A people of compassion and righteousness. A people who might bring your world of peace to this troubled world of ours. Rukim atem bevo'achem, we are blessed that we have come tonight. Rukim atem be'tsechem, let us be blessed as we go forward now from this gathering of God. Amen. Shabbat shalom and hope to see everybody next week for the High Holy Days.
Shabbat shalom.